All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is the Human Resources Committee. Call to order, I am chair of the committee. Councilman Boykin, Councilman Honeycutt, Councilman Pryor, and of course Chairman SASS are other members. First item for business is the minutes of October 19th, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, the minutes are approved. Second, we have a executive session. Just to hear, just what we're going to try and do is I know there's some other items, so I'm going to have a motion for an executive session. Before we take a vote on that, we're going to disband the committee and re-enter county council so that we can kind of loop all of the executive session items in. So if I could get a motion for an executive session to receive legal advice.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, hearing none. We will disband the committee and move back into Mr. Chairman, county council meeting.
Thank you, I'll call this county council meeting to order. For the purpose of our executive session, it'll be Freedom of Information Act first.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meeting was posted and agendas were distributed to news media and persons requesting notification.
Do I hear a motion?
Second.
To go into executive session for these three items. Thank you, moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We will go into executive session and be right back, I hope.
She's helping us out there with that. She just has prepared...
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to...
No, we're gonna... We have to go first. We'll come back to you. We're back from executive session where we received some legal advice. No votes were taken. No decisions were made. Mr. Boykin, do you have a motion?
I do, Mr. Chair. I move to authorize the county attorney to negotiate and finalize a settlement agreement based on the terms and conditions discussed in the executive session and authorize the chairman to execute all documents necessary for the settlement agreement for all three cases. That is my motion, sir.
Moved and seconded. Moved by Mr. Boykin, seconded by Reverend Middleton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Oh, excuse me, one nay.
Was the nay? Who... Was there a nay?
Here's what I'd like to say. I'm gonna join Mr. Gabrowski with the nay. However, I'm going to ask the HBC to please consider more input from the community because when it comes down to an individual basis, I think we have certain individual rights. And we just can't restrict people just because. Just as an example, in terms of a flat roof, if I'm desirous of building a flat roof on my property and I'm not going beyond, I ought to have that right. But at the same time, there must be restrictions. So hopefully, the HBC, along with the community, can come to a happy medium so that we will have some type of satisfaction. Because the purpose of it is really to preserve historic dirt, if I may use the term. So I'm just going to admoni... Not a too strong word. Ask the HBC to please consider some things from the community.
Thank you, Mr. Darby. I'm gonna disband county council. We'll go back into our HR committee. Mr. Werman?
Mr. Chairman, just to quickly reconvene the HR committee meeting, we entered into executive session, received legal advice regarding the parental leave policy. No votes were taken. And getting the other phrase that I'm supposed to use here, but no decisions were made, no votes were taken. I will... This concludes the HR committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item is Public Works Committee. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First order of business is the minutes from November 9:30. Thank you, Mr. Pryor.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Honeycutt. Any additions, deletions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number two is Captiva Row Outfall Drainage Isment Maintenance Acceptance.
Second.
Mr. Boykin seconded. Any questions of staff?
All okay.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number three, ZLDR amendments to the traffic impact studies.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Middleton. Seconded by Mr. Boykin. Mr. Werman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I just had one question. I know that this was discussed some time ago, but in terms of the... You know, I know that one of the amendments allows basically to do a traffic study where none might otherwise be required. And the other sort of says where there's a DOT right-of-way, we could exempt it even if certain conditions are met. Is the... I mean, is the... Is there some other sort of set of basically guidelines that removes the need for a traffic study where there's a DOT right-of-way? Does DOT sort of have their own regulations? Is that what's driving that?
So the DOT traffic engineer will make that call whether a traffic study is necessary or not?
So the idea is that there's already someone from DOT making that same type of assessment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I understand. Gabrowski?
I had some confusion on that, too. I mean, everything we deal with is traffic congestion. Why would we omit the need to do a traffic study when that is what plagues us both?
Well, the DOT looks at these developments just like we do. And if they deem that because it's their road and they have maintenance and ownership of the roadway, they set the policy for the DOT highway.
I would say that I understand that from a logistics viewpoint, but they have maybe on the road, but the people in Charleston County are the ones who live here and travel the roads. And I think that we're the governing board of the county. I would rest us to have our own input on that. We're the ones who live through the traffic misery and congestion. I would not be in favor of eliminating another layer of looking at that. So I would oppose eliminating a traffic study. Just because of Department of Transportation, we have difference of opinion on that. 526 is one. And people on the board here differ on that. I feel that having the people of Charleston County having a direct voice in traffic congestion studies is a good thing, not a bad thing. That's why I would oppose the elimination.
Councilmember...
Mr. Pryor?
You can...
Sorry. Mr. Tooten had it.
Mr. Thigpen, I thought had a question. Or wanted to respond.
Mr. Pryor, let's let Mr. Thigpen respond, then we'll go to you, please.
Yes. The change allows the public works director at his discretion not to require it. It doesn't automatically exempt anybody from getting... Not having to do a traffic study. It's based on his discretion.
I understand.
Mr. Pryor?
Even if we come up with something different, it's a state DOT road, you know, we can't overrule them. They can say, well, no, thanks for the information, but we're gonna do it our way. So the state supersedes the county. But I wouldn't want to spend taxpayers' dollars on something that we know that the state's not gonna agree in. So I think that's why they go ask the state first before we go and spend money to do a traffic study. And they says, well, no, we're not gonna listen to it. I give you a perfect example, speedhumps. A lot of people are crying for speedhumps in the neighborhood. But if it's a state road, you can't put speedhumps out of state, you know, blessing. And then the speed limit has to be a certain speed limit, I think under 30 miles an hour or 25 miles an hour before these things are installed. So while I hear you, Mr. Gabrowski, it would look good for us to do, but they will have the final say. Because it's their road.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Crossy?
Just briefly respond. Thank you. Those are wise comments, and I appreciate that. I just think that the misery that people have here with traffic congestion is still helpful for us to have that input. And I would not want to end that and us to be responsible for taking another response that people looked us to do that response and require.
That's some ideas I share with you the first of the year.
Call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes, one nay. Mr. Brodsky's nay. Mr. Sasse, that concludes our planning of public works meeting.
Next item is Finance Committee. Approval of minutes of October 19.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Pryor, seconded by...
We'll give it to whosoever on that end. Mr. Boykin.
Mr. Boykin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Number two, consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
By Mr. Pryor, seconded by Mr. Reverend Middleton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Public Services Directorate.
Move for approval on 3A.
Second.
Can it be moved by Mr. Pryor, seconded by Mr. Moody?
Yeah.
Excuse me, Mr. Moody, you have a...
I did. I had a couple of questions for Mr. Tooten or Mr. Thigpen, if I may. Do we have an updated cost estimate? I know the Ash River Bridge was $74 million. Now, that one has the opening feature, but this goes a lot longer, a lot higher.
We don't have an updated one yet. In the last grant of application, it was right at 44 to 45 million off the cuff, I would say, based on the increases that we would have seen recently with construction costs. I would have to estimate that's probably grown to probably 50 to 55 million.
We have two, I guess, two new members of council that haven't seen this before. Can you remind us what the objective of this project was?
It was to get pedestrians and bicyclists from West Ashley to the intersection of Cosgrove and Azalea.
Did two of the other options that we did not select contemplate of getting people to Rivers as well, to the Carter stopper?
I believe the pedestrian access already exists between Azalea and Rivers.
Okay, okay.
We ran into trouble basically trying to safely get people through the on-ramps and off-ramps to I-26. And that's why we ended up at the plan that is basically as the preferred alternative.
So the east and west bridges, how far are those from Cosgrove and Azalea?
So the tie-in to Azalea, if you're headed...
So if I'm coming from Rivers Avenue and I want to access this bridge, if I go towards Charleston, how far down Azalea do I have to go? And how far down Azalea towards here do I have to go to access the entry points?
If you're going to the Baker Hospital's side, it's about 3/4 of a mile. If you're coming this way, it's about a half a mile.
Okay. That tells me I think people will still use the middle, unfortunately. Have we been contacted by groups like Coast Conservation League about the environmental impacts to wetlands?
I am not aware that we have, sir.
Okay.
I have a question. I have a question, Mr.... The Coast Guard, they're gonna require a permit to build a bridge?
Yes, sir. It is a navigable waterway, and the Coast Guard will require a permit.
And do you know if those have been applied for?
No, sir. We've not applied for any permits. We're... All we've done is really the conceptual study. We haven't got into design at any... We're not there.
Okay, thank you.
But I think the purpose of what we're doing, we're trying to secure federal funds.
Right, right.
In this way, you know, we can't let $42 million walk away based on, you know, different ideologies. I mean, this will do more than just help people across there to give those poor communities access to a boardwalk, access to the river. Now, some of these folks have never had access to the water. And so this will give them access on the Harvey Avenue side and then on the Baker Avenue side, those folks can go into King Street. But I think this is something that's needed. You can't put a price on a life. I was over there the other day going to drop my grandson off to school, and some guy was with a bicycle weaving in and out in the middle. And that's just too dangerous.
I've seen it.
And so, you know, I'm looking to gain this $42 million from the federal government. I think we're not close just about doing it. Congressman Clibburn is 100% behind us. I think Senator Graham is behind us as well. And so if we get it in on time and get this money, that's gonna... And then the rest will be with the half any sales tax. You know, and these folks pay taxes, too. So that's why I'm so adamant about doing something to save lives. That's my biggest objective, saving lives.
Yes, sir. Public safety, I agree.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Now, we have a presentation for our countywide strategic plan. Sean Santana?
Good evening, all.
Yes, he's with the Riley Center. He's with the Riley Center. Thank you for the time this evening. Kendra Stewart is available by Zoom. She's with the Riley Center. She helped us through this process. We'll go through the timeline, the process we undertook, and what the next steps are. Doesn't like it. Oh, I could use that.
So this dates back to March of this year when county council held their retreat. That's where we identified the priorities for the strategic plan. From there, our working group met with the DCAs as well as their department heads to come up with goals and strategies that tie directly into those priorities. We drafted the strategic plan, went back to leadership team, and we also coordinated with the Riley Center. These are the seven priorities identified. There's more information about how these are broken down in the strategic plan that you have in front of you. So into more detail, the strategic plan will kick off in FY '25 and go through FY '27. It only impacts the departments that are under the administrator. It also serves as a nice blueprint and snapshot for what the county does on a daily basis and really highlights our accomplishments. An important part of this is going to be the tracking and transparency. There's a request for information currently out through our procurement department to identify a strategic plan tracking software. This will enable the public to see, have a front-facing dashboard to see where we are in the process. It'll also send reminders to staff to make sure that they update the strategies and goals as we go through this plan. And it'll also be an opportunity for us to highlight council actions as they relate to the strategic strategies and priorities. So what we're asking for tonight is to approve the county council's strategic plan as well as the mission, vision, and values contained within.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Stewart, you didn't need to say anything. Thank you anyway.
Thank you, all. Congratulations.
Merry Christmas.
All right. Next item, public hearing. Multi-county industrial park for affordable housing.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing before final approval by council of an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance to Establish pursuant to Section 4-1-170, a multi-county park in conjunction with Colliton County, South Carolina, to provide for a written agreement with Colliton County as to the sharing of revenue and expenses for the park and to provide for the distribution of revenues from the park among taxing entities having jurisdiction over the park."
Thank you. Is there anybody signed up?
Yes. Do you have any?
I didn't see him back there. Oh, there he is. Okay.
Happy holidays to you. Reason why I'm back, last night, I was at the Post and Courier's development plan downtown in the third phase. I was the only one to make public comment in terms of approval with conditions. And this is similar to it, these questionable relationships with different counties. And then the question becomes, should this be a joint public hearing with Colliton County? I mean, we should all be weighing in together. How I read this, it's two different counties. So, you know, you got ethical questions in terms of... You all under the ethics, you know, South Carolina Ethics Government Accountability and Campaign Reform Act. So we need to try to figure out how we deal with these public hearings, these notices here in terms of who is... Who are you working with? Are they here now to answer any questions? We are posing? I'm posing? From Colliton County? I mean, this is what you're doing. What I'm saying is if this is the method of how you do it, fine, no problem. I won't begrudge you on that. But I question the fact that there are some issues, ongoing issues, particularly with the Post and Courier making mention of counties who didn't pay their annual tax revenue, annual reports. That was in the Post and Courier a couple weeks ago, actually, in terms of counties not complying with their revenue reporting, right? And Hampton County and some other counties were not available in terms of that. So I'm here because I have a concern in terms of we're gonna be doing these partnerships, and we got growth. Growth is clearly not defined at all, not... There's no clear definition of growth period. We hope that if you're gonna be doing all these things together, how is it going to impact those people who can't pay their rent above 50% of their income? Still hadn't heard that one yet. Hadn't been announced on that yet.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan. Bryan? Anymore? Thank you. Colliton County will have their own set of hearings, and they agree to do this as well. So they will have public hearings just like we do. Thank you very much. Public comments?
Yes, we have six people signed up. The first person is Anthony G. Bryant, followed by Katie Zimmerman, and then Ed Sutton.
Just heard from the IRS about my concern. We got an issue in terms of compliance with the governor and department revenue. And also, when you don't... You are non-compliant, and you are compliant with the IRS, how can you not be in compliance with the department revenue? Now, my speech has been qualified. My assembly's been qualified. I get assessed. I do know many of my friends in federal or state prison, and I don't know what happened in the third grade, but I could read on grade level. I had two great parents. And that's how I was able to, you know, go to college and do the things I'm doing in my life. Thank God for Betty and Honor. But, you know, some people don't have a Betty and Honor around in their life. And also, I can't forget to say, Teddy Pryor, my concerns for you and your family. Didn't want to go in with disrespect you in that kind of way. I know how painful that is to have that happen. And my own brother had my own brother when he was 18 years old. So the question to me is, where's the sheriff at? Where's the solicitor at? Why do you have meetings? You appropriate people that arrest people, that surveil people, observe people. They ain't here. You appropriate people that's supposed to provide equal protection and due protection under law, but they ain't here right now to be questioned by the public. You've outlaid millions of dollars in lawsuits, but we got a question, and they're here. So why aren't they here? If you appropriate somebody with our money, need to be here to answer any said question they have to answer. If it's a DEA, the ATF, look at this report. 90% of kids in our community are 18 years old carrying a gun? Okay, the question becomes, well, why are they carrying a gun? What's up with them? The causation of why they have the gun is my concern, not the using them, the causation of why they got it. And the first, what makes them want to do that? And other kids we got from high school all the time? We gotta be causal. We can't give adverse effect, overpass, we don't stop this from happening. It'll never stop happening. Happy holiday.
Thank you, sir.
Katie Zimmerman.
Thank you for the time this evening. Kendra Stewart is available by Zoom. She's with the Riley Center. She helped us through this process. We'll go through the timeline, the process we undertook, and what the next steps are. Doesn't like it. So this dates back to March of this year when county council held their retreat. That's where we identified the priorities for the strategic plan. From there, our working group met with the DCAs as well as their department heads to come up with goals and strategies that tie directly into those priorities. We drafted the strategic, strategic plan, went back to leadership team, and we also coordinated with the Riley Center. These are the seven priorities identified. There's more information about how these are broken down in the strategic plan that you have in front of you. So into more detail, the strategic plan will kick off in FY '25 and go through FY '27. It only impacts the departments that are under the administrator. It also serves as a nice blueprint and snapshot for what the county does on a daily basis and really highlights our accomplishments. An important part of this is going to be the tracking and transparency. There is a request for information currently out through our procurement department to identify a strategic plan tracking software. This will enable the public to see, have a front-facing dashboard to see where we are in the process. It'll also send reminders to staff to make sure that they update the strategies and goals as we go through this plan. And it'll also be an opportunity for us to highlight council actions as they relate to the strategic strategies and priorities. So what we're asking for tonight is to approve the county council's strategic plan as well as the mission, vision, and values contained within.
Both approved.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Stewart, you didn't need to say anything. Thank you anyway.
Thank you all. Congratulations.
Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas.
All right. Next item, public hearing, multi-county industrial park for affordable housing.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing before final approval by council of an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance to Establish Pursuant to Section 4-1-170, a Multi-County Park in Conjunction with Colleton County, South Carolina, to provide for a written agreement with Colleton County as to the sharing of revenue and expenses for the park and to provide for the distribution of revenues from the park among taxing entities having jurisdiction over the park."
Thank you. Is there anybody signed up?
Yes. Do you have any?
I didn't even see him back there. Oh, there he is. Okay.
Happy holidays to you.
Holidays.
Um, reason why I'm back last night, I was at the Post and Courier's Development Plan downtown in the third phase. I was the only one to make public comment in terms of approval with conditions. And this is similar to it. These questionable relationships with different counties. And then the question becomes, should this be a joint public hearing with Colleton County? I mean, you know, we should all be weighing in together. How I read this, it's, it's two different counties. So, you know, you got ethical questions in terms of, you all under the ethics, you know, South Carolina Ethics Government Accounting and Campaign Reform Act. So we, we need to try to figure out how we, how we deal with these, 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 these public hearings, these notices here in terms of who is, who are you working with? Are they here now to answer any questions we are posing? I'm posing from Colleton County? I mean, this is what you're doing. What I'm saying is if this is the method of how you do it, fine, no problem. I, I wouldn't, I won't judge you on that. But I question the fact that there are some issues, ongoing issues, which particularly with the Post and Courier making mention of counties who didn't pay their annual tax revenue, annual reports. That was in the Post and Courier a couple weeks ago, actually, in terms of counties not complying with their revenue reporting, right? And Hampton County and some other counties were not, were not available in terms of that. So I, I'm here because I have a concern in terms of we're going to be doing these partnerships and we got growth. Growth is clearly not defined at all. Not, there's no clear definition of growth period. We hope that if you're going to be doing all these things together, how is it going to impact those people who can't pay their rent above 50% of their income? Still hadn't heard that one yet. Hadn't been announced on that yet.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Bryant? Anymore? Thank you. Colleton County will have their own set of hearings and they, they agree to do this as well. So they will have public hearings just like we do. Thank you very much. Public comments?
Yes, we have six people signed up. The first person is Anthony G. Bryant, followed by Katie Zimmerman and then Ed Sutton.
Just heard from the IRS about my concern. We got an issue in terms of compliance with the governor and department revenue. And also, when you don't, you are non-compliant and you are compliant with the IRS, how can you not be in compliance with the department revenue? Now, my speech has been qualified. My assembly's been qualified. I, I, I can assess that. I do know many of my friends in federal and state prison and I don't know what happened in the third grade, but I could read on grade level. I had two great parents. And that's how I was able to, you know, go to college and do the things I'm doing in my life. Thank God for Betty and Honor. But, you know, some people don't have a Betty and Honor Brian in their life. And also, I can't forget to say, Teddy Pryor, my concerns for you and your family. Didn't want to go in there with disrespect you in that kind of way. I know how painful that is to have that happen. And my own, my own brother had, my own brother, and he was 18 years old. So the, the question to me is, where's the sheriff at? Where's Solicitor at? Why do you have meetings? You appropriate people that, that arrest people, that surveil people, observe people. They ain't here. You appropriate people that's supposed to provide equal protection and due prosecution under law, but they ain't here right now to be questioned by the public. You've outlaid millions of dollars in lawsuits, but we got a question and they're here. So why aren't they here? If you appropriate somebody with our money, need to be here to answer any said question they have to answer. If it's a DEA, the ATF, look at this report. Ninety percent of kids in our community are 18 years old carrying a gun. What, what, okay, the question becomes, well, why are they carrying a gun? What's up with them? The causation of why they have the gun is my concern, not the using them. The causation of why they got it. And the first, what makes them want to do that? And other kids we got from high school all the time. We, we got to be causal. We can't give adverse effect, both press accounts, we're going to stop this from happening. It don't never stop happening. Happy holiday.
Thank you, sir.
Katie Zimmerman, Ed Sutton, Carla Pinkney.
Good evening. Katie Zimmerman, Executive Director of Charleston Moves. Thank you so much for having the North Bridge, pedestrian bridge, on your agendas tonight, both at Finance Committee and at full council. And thank you so much for your supportive vote for proceeding with an application in Finance Committee. Charleston Moves, we've, we've already started pulling together data and research to help bulk up this application because we were, we had our fingers crossed that you all would, would approve the application. So we've been working very hard to pull together the supplemental data that USDOT recommended we add that was missing from the previous applications. And I just want to state that thank you so much for supporting this. It's so important. You all already know how important it is to fill this gap in the transportation network. We've spent a lot of time talking to people at intersections on either side of the bridge, getting their stories, learning about why they feel forced to bike or walk over the bridge now. And it's, nobody's doing it for fun or, or because they, they're doing it because they don't have another option. And so I just want to thank you not only for voting for a project that's going to save lives, but also for your vision on it because it's going to be such a game changer for the region in general. Thinking about connecting it to LCRT, green space, the work that's being done at Seymour Street. I mean, this is, this is really wonderful and exciting. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed Sutton, Carla Pinkney, Michael German.
Hello, Ed Sutton, and I'll start by offering my, to these, the Councilman Pryor. I'm beyond humbled that you're here tonight for this very important vote. And what you said certainly rings true, particularly with, with North Bridge. This will save lives if we get this thing right. Because as we know, pedestrian safety is a big issue in our, our region. And if you read the Post and Courier, it's accurate. They'll tell you that a pedestrian and cyclist in the state, this is the most dangerous area to be in because we have old bridges like the Cosgrove that don't have sidewalks and people have no choice but to, to walk down the median. I actually live at the base of the bridge. I'm in Park Shore Three, right by the synagogue. So this is very close to my house. I also do a lot of work on the south end of North Charleston redevelopment-wise. So I go across this bridge at least six times a day. And there's not a day that goes by that I don't see at least one. Usually it's multiple people trying to cross this bridge. And the last three people who have died on this bridge were all folks going to work. So I think we have a moral obligation here to make sure that people can safely, you know, transit from the residence to their, their place of work. Also, I'll tie it to the Ravenel Bridge. That bridge has been wildly successful the last 15 years as far as people getting exercise. And I'm working on a couple little extra holiday pounds right now. I would love in the future if I could run across the, the future North Bridge and also use that as beyond just getting back and forth to work and use it as an opportunity to take my kids out on the bike, an opportunity to exercise. The other really thing that, real cool thing that's happened that gets me excited is North Charleston is now talking about doing a boardwalk on that side of the Ashy River. And this would obviously be a, a natural tie-in. And if we get it right, we'll be able to either run, walk, bike, all the way from the Stono to the Cooper River and tie into the North Charleston Riverfront Park that they've done a really good job with over there. So needless to say, I'm a big supporter of the, the North Bridge. It's my third year in a row coming to speak to you guys on this one. So hopefully third time's a charm and the federal government approves our, our raised grant application. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carla Pinkney, Michael German, Jerome Vanderhorst.
Good evening. First, Councilman Pryor, on behalf of the Ten Mile community, our prayers are with your family. My name is Carla Pinkney and I'm a resident of the Ten Mile community. I am here tonight to request the county council's support for rezoning the Ten Mile community to S3. As staff has previously established, the average lot size of the Ten Mile community is over one acre. Additionally, more than 250-plus residents have signed a petition requesting to be rezoned to S3. We've also reinforced this during meetings with staff at the library that have taken place. Once again, the residents of Ten Mile are requesting your support for the, our district, the Ten Mile historic district, specifically that portion of the district that is east of Highway 17, to be rezoned as S3. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael German, Jerome Vanderhorst.
Good evening. Michael German, 1707 Snouton Road, Snouton, South Carolina. Again, one of my pet peeves for the last 20 years has been sewer. We seem to be making progress in that area. The last update I've got from Mr. Alan Clum, Chairman of Mount Pleasant Water Works, said that surveys and all the other supporting documents are completed and submitted to the town of Mount Pleasant for permitting as well as the county. That's the latest update and that's as of last month. Hopefully, we had a good year. We had a, a very productive year in terms of getting our sewer project completed. I just trust that it remains on track with the starting date of April 2024. It's been a long time coming. My second comment, I'm kind of regressing a bit and I'm hearing the comments of public safety, sidewalks. For the past 20 years, we've been asking for the same thing that you are now, or one of the, on the front page or, 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 or visible now throughout the county is sidewalk. We've been asking for sidewalk, but we seem to be locked in between the town of Mount Pleasant and the county on Snouton Road. Anytime there's something happens on Lawn Point Road, we reroute the traffic on Snouton Road. I am equally concerned, Mr. Pryor, about my grandchildren has to walk and dart cars in and out when this happens. What do we need to do to ensure that that's a priority item, among other things, to make sure that the people in my community remains safe and we have no tragedy? That's a... Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Happy holidays. First of all, I want to say I, we send prayers to Mr. Pryor and his family from the Ten Mile community, from my family to your family. First of all, I want to start off by saying, Jerome Vanderhorst, I live in the Ten Mile community. I want to thank Joe, Emily, and the staff for coming out. I think it was on Monday after that horrendous storm we had, placing those signs out in the community, letting everybody know that we have a meeting January the 9th to talk about the, to rule on the, the S3 zoning. And everybody in the Ten Mile community is in favor, strong in favor of zoning to the S3 zoning for our community. Mr. Kabowski and Mr. Werman came out to the Mount Pleasant Library December the 6th, and they heard all the concerns from the community. And it was very, very, I would say, important. And it was very positive towards, to what the people had to say about the, the zoning. And I thank them for coming out because it shows us that you guys are concerned of, of how we feel in the community. So again, I take my hats off to you guys. Thank you very much. My next thing I want to talk about is the HBC guidelines. Please do not take away the powers that protects the people in the settlement community, not only in Ten Mile, but the entire Gullah Gitchie corridor. We need that protection. As you can see, I mentioned earlier, the flooding, we still have the flooding problems. We still have... We still have no lights on the streets in the Ten Mile community. Just recently, and I know I'm going over the time, just give me a second. We recently had all those cars that flood from Carnival Cruise downtown. So we know that this is a serious, serious situation we have. We just don't have the proper infrastructure throughout the Charleston County area. So anything that you can do to protect the environment, protect the people, please take it upon yourself to go to a step further. Just not, you know, let it go in one ear and I know you won't, let it go in one ear and the other, and not do nothing about it. Just rule, just to appease, and I'm going to say it, money. Because at the end of the day, money has no value on somebody's life. So we need your help with all the problems we have here in the Charleston area. And so, thank you, thank you. Mr. Smalls, I hope I wasn't too long. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's it?
That's it. Okay, thank you. We're going to go back, we're going to go into our county council meeting.
I think Mr. Vanderhorst might have one more thing to say.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Yeah, one important thing for Joe and his staff, we would like you guys to meet with us one more time before January the 30th to finalize, so we can see the draft that, what you put together for the HBC guidelines. So if you could come back to the Mount Pleasant Library one more time and talk to the community at large, we'd be very pleased and happy if you could do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we're going to go into our county council agenda. We already did our Freedom of Information Act. Ms. Honeycutt's going to lead us in prayer. And Mr. Tooten's going to lead us in the pledge.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the ability to come together tonight. We thank you for the season and the celebration of the birth of your son. We thank you for the staff who serve the county and the hard work that they do every day. We thank you for the law enforcement and first responders who are out there working through the holidays, and we pray that you would bless them. We pray for those who are serving overseas and away from their families at this time of year, that you would put a special blessing on them and their families while they're away. We especially lift up Courtney Pryor tonight, Lord. We thank you for sparing her. We thank you for protecting her and for providing the medical care that she needs and she continues to need. We pray that she would have a speedy recovery. And we lift up her family, Councilman Pryor, and her mother and sisters and brothers, her children especially, Lord, while she's down. Lord, I just pray that you would keep her safe, keep her protected, and put a special blessing on their family this time. We thank you for all these things. Bless us as we conduct this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item, minutes of November 30. Moved and approved. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Is it possible we can move 9E to the front, sir? I have a, a situation at home that I need to, to get to, sir. Is that possible?
Uh, I think so.
If you would, sir, please.
I think so. Okay, we'll, we'll... 9A, moved by Mr. Pryor.
A and B. A and B. I was just about to say that, second.
Right. A and B, moved by Mr. Pryor, seconded by Reverend Middleton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And if I may say, sir, I'm happy holidays, all. Honeycutt, a serious prayer. Thank you so very much for it, ma'am. No, serious, serious prayer. And you all have a good night, please.
Be safe.
I got it. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. Let's see. Third reading ordinances, multi-county industrial park incentives, affordable housing.
An ordinance to establish pursuant to Section 4-1-170, the Code of Laws of South Carolina 1976 as amended, a multi-county business parking in conjunction with Colleton County, South Carolina, to provide for a written agreement with Colleton County as to the sharing of the revenues and expenses of the park, to provide for the distribution of revenues from the park among taxing entities having jurisdiction over the park, to provide for a fee in lieu of, of ad valorem taxation and other matters related thereto. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby? Oh, I'm sorry. He just walked out. Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabowski?
Nay.
Mr. Middleton? Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
All right. The ordinance passes third reading with seven ayes, one nay, one absent.
Thank you, ma'am. Zoning, third reading ordinances, A, 4A boarding stables in rural areas.
An ordinance amending the Charleston County zoning and land development regulations, ordinance number 1202 as amended, to create the boarding stable used to be allowed with conditions in the rural area and clarify the definitions for different classifications of stables at the following document locations. Chapter 6, use regulations, and Chapter 12, definitions with the, oh, this is third reading. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Nay.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
All right. The ordinance passes third reading with seven ayes, one nay, one absent.
All right, next one. 4B, small-scale mining operations. Or ordinance, third reading?
An ordinance amending the Charleston County zoning and land development regulations, ordinance number 1202 as amended, to exempt small-scale excavation and grading activities for residential and agricultural uses from the conditions for large-scale commercial resource extraction at the following document locations. Chapter 6, use regulations. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabowski?
Nay.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Nay.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with six ayes, two nays, one absent.
Number 4C, bicycle, bicycle parking, ordinance, third reading?
An ordinance amending the Charleston County zoning and land development regulations, ordinance number 1202 as amended, to require bicycle parking for certain developments at the following document locations. Chapter 9, development standards. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with eight ayes and one absent.
Thank you. Number 4D, scenic road rights of way, trees clarification, ordinance, third reading?
An ordinance amending the Charleston County zoning and land development regulations, ordinance number 1202 as amended, to clarify tree protection requirements within designated scenic rights of way at the following document locations. Chapter 8, subdivision regulations, Chapter 9, development requirements, and Chapter 12, definitions. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with eight ayes and one absent.
Thank you. 4E, parking clarifications, ordinance, third reading?
An ordinance amending the Charleston County zoning and land development regulations, ordinance number 1202 as amended, to remove redundant language to clarify parking requirements at the following document locations. Chapter 9, development standards. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with eight ayes and one absent.
Number five, second reading ordinances, Board of Assessment Appeals, ordinance amendments?
An ordinance amending Charleston County Code, Article 4 of Chapter 19, taxation, to add an officer and other matters related thereto. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr., Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Ordinance passes second reading with eight ayes, one absent.
Thank you. Number six, committee recommendations?
We're moving for committee recommendation, item 6A.
Moved by Mr. Moody, seconded by Ms. Honeycutt. Do we have a discussion on that? Let's have some discussion. How about, how about you, Mr. Kabowski?
Well, we talked a little bit about in the committee and I realize they may be in minority here, but I think, I just think I'd be the majority of the people who travel our roads. And I understand this may make things more efficient for the Department of Transportation, but one of the things that we face here is overdevelopment and traffic congestion. And I can't imagine us voting to take a, a level of being able to present how people in Charleston County feel about the traffic congestion on our roads to eliminate that. To me, it would be unimaginable for it to take away the right and power of citizens in Charleston County who we are elected to represent, to be a voice for them, to have a way to put our voice as to how we feel about the traffic congestion. And these, to waive that right, I, I just can't imagine that most people would want us... and people have seen how our community has changed, and the people would want and deserve the right to have that ability, to have their elected officials through us to voice that. And I cannot endorse giving up that right. And I would urge to vote against it.
Thank you, Mr. Kobowski. Any further discussion? Mr. Werman?
I just, I just want to clarify what we're doing here. This applies to developments, so it is not where the DOT is building a road or anything. It's where there would be a development where you might need to go before, I guess, Planning Commission or something, and, or our planning folks might require a traffic study in the submission of some sort of development, right? Is that what I'm understanding this to be?
No.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Boykin's going to clarify this for me.
Go ahead.
What this is, is it gives our deputy administrator over Public Works the ability to waive a traffic study when he already knows that DOT is not going to require one. And even if we were to do the traffic study, they would not adopt any recommendations that we have because it's their road, not ours.
And I just want to clarify, but that's not dealing with road projects. That's dealing with developments, correct?
Yes, sir. It would be anything that comes before the Planning Department. When the developer submits his package, he submits a letter of coordination from the DOT, and they will say whether they require a traffic study, and if it's, if it's required, they'll submit the traffic study to the county for us to review. If it's not required, we won't see one.
Yeah, and so I will just add as commentary, you know, whether it's public capacity or private capacity, I mean, overregulation is a thing, and I think that there is a tension, for sure. I understand that the tension on the other side is the potential for overdevelopment, but it does seem to me where that determination has already been made by another party, you know, and there are other aspects of this amendment that actually increase our ability to impose traffic studies. I think that this strikes a good balance, and I understand where our folks are coming from, so I'm able to support this.
And I just to bolster your point, if this were to play completely out, and the county did a traffic study, and they said, well, they want a curb cut, or a roundabout, or turn lane, and DOT said, we don't require that, in the end, it doesn't matter what we want, because it's their road, and they're going to say how it's going to be. So that was, it was, it was an issue of redundancy, and I guess maybe separate sovereigns, as it were.
I understand. I appreciate it. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Kobowski.
Just a final brief comment. It may not have the effect of changing what they do, but certainly, we have a right at the county to voice how we feel, as opposed to how the state feels. I feel that we can try to change it and bring the voices of the people who are affected by the development and congestion. That's who we are. That's what the county council should do. That should be a role that we endorse, to at least to take the position how the people feel and bring that to them. We don't have the final say, but to give up that right to voice to the state how we feel about it through our elected officials, and I feel that we're not here to make things easier for the developers or the State Department of Transportation, but be the voice of the people who actually live here and endure the congestion and the traffic. And I think that we should not give up that right.
Ms. Honeycutt?
Mr. Thengpin. Mr. Kobowski keeps saying we're giving up a right. Are we giving up the right? Or is it just that you get to make that determination?
I'm clarifying, the Public Works Director will make that determination.
Okay. But we are not giving up the right. If we want to do a study and waste money 150 times a year on this stuff, that's taxpayer dollars that we would have to expend to do those studies that would be meaningless, right?
Yes, ma'am. The DOT says that they're not needed. They probably won't get approved.
Okay. I stand in support of this as well, for that reason.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Number 7, Planning Public Works.
Recommendation.
Second. Moved by Mr. Pryor, seconded by Ms. Honeycutt.
Moved by Mr., okay, whatever. We will go with that.
That was Mr. Pryor.
Moved by Mr. Moody.
Mr. Pryor, Mr. Moody, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chair, do we need to have the ordinance read?
Traffic.
Traffic studies?
Yes, we do.
Thank you, sir.
We need to read that ordinance. Do we need to read that one? First reading, traffic impact studies?
Yes, sir, sorry. An ordinance amending the Charleston County zoning and land development regulations, ordinance number 1202 as amended, to allow the Public Works Director to waive the ZLDR traffic impact study requirements on SC DOT rights of way at the following document locations. Chapter 9 development standards, with the right to amend up to third reading.
Thank you. We don't have to vote on that.
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Next item, Planning Public Works Committee Recommendations, Captiva Road Outfall. Moved by Mr. Pryor, seconded by Mr. Moody. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Eight, consent agenda.
Recommendation.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Honeycutt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none?
We've done one.
We did number nine already?
We did number two when we came back from executive session.
Right, so we did number 10. Okay, so we will do...
I'd move for committee recommendation.
Number 10.
Number 10, A through C.
We already did that.
We already agreed. We got to do this. We did, we already agreed.
That committee.
We did it in committee.
In committee, okay.
It just came straight to county council. It did not go to committee.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right. Council comments. Reverend Middleton?
Mr. Chair, very brief comments tonight as we conclude Hanukkah. I would just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, and joyous New Year. Mr. Pryor, we continue to pray for you and your family, your daughter, and certainly, we are here with you and for you. God bless.
Thank you, Rev. Mr. Moody?
I would echo Mr. Reverend Middleton's comments about your family, Teddy. We certainly keep him in our prayers, and don't be, don't be too proud to ask for help. We're here. You come by my house every, every day, so we have cars that can take kids around, too. So, very well said about the holidays. Merry Christmas. Just watching my son is on his plane coming home right now, so that's exciting.
That's great.
But Happy New Year to everybody, and thank you to the staff for another great year, all you do, and we'll see you in January.
Got to text with your dad, too.
I want to echo the comments.
Mr. Kobowski?
Yeah. Echo the comments to Mr. Pryor and Godspeed and a quick and total recovery. I also want to mention, and for the family of Judy Morrow, who tragically died, and Ravens Run and the flood this recently, and I can't imagine the horror of her husband and the grief and the despair that she suffered as her car was submerged, and her tragic death should be noted, too, that there's, and prayers for her family. And I wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Werman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I would, I would echo a lot of the thoughts and prayers that have been offered, and particularly to my friend, Councilman Pryor here. You know, I've been thinking about you a lot, and thinking about your family, and wishing everybody the best under these difficult times. I do want to thank this council for a good year. I want to thank our chairman, I want to thank our county administrator and staff, and Vice Chairman Honeycutt, and everyone. I think we've accomplished a lot on some big issues. I think that this methodology with the strategic plan is something that is exciting, and I'm excited to see what we can accomplish in the coming year. So, that being said, I wish everyone Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, and I'll see everyone in the new year.
All right. Mr. Pryor?
All right, I want to thank everybody for their prayers, their telephone call, their texts. You know, nobody wants to get that phone call or that doorknob at 11:00, 11:30 at night, you know, talking about a tragic accident. But I will say, you know, thank you, Eric. You know, I picked up the phone because it was so unclear, so I called Eric to see if she transported that, and he was able to give me that information. And when I got there, I was in total shock. But she's doing better. She's scheduled for a major knee surgery tomorrow, and we trust in God that she will come my dad okay. But continuing to pray for her kids, her mother, the whole family as well as myself. But it's trying times, it's the first Christmas that we'll be apart, but thank God she's still alive.
Yes, sir. Mr. Boykin?
Well, I think all I want to say is, I first want to thank all our staff, all our fellow council members, for being so welcoming, supportive, and just holding me by the hand and keeping me out of the ditches, and it's been a great year with y'all. I thought when I retired from ATF, you know, I was losing a family, but now I've gained one, and y'all are all part of, and it means the world to me. I've had a great year. I've learned so much, and wouldn't want to be anywhere else, and look forward to the coming years, and wish you all a safe and happy holiday season.
Thank you.
Yes, so, really, really incredibly proud of the work that we're doing here at the county, and just wanted to recognize each department, Walt, your team, and FEMA, the work that we've done to improve those rates around the county, and all of the work the team has done. Eric, EMS, another graduated class, emergency management, the response over the weekend with the flooding. You guys are on the ball. It's incredible to watch and be a part of, and know we can trust our teams doing the work. Steve, transportation and all that we're getting accomplished, I mean, it is incredible to be a part, just talking about North Bridge and all of the ways we are looking at transportation, the BRT transit, other things besides just roads, but we do incredible roadwork, too. Past Glenn McConnell and our half-cent sales tax sign today, we're getting the job done for the county's taxpayers, and I appreciate that and being a part of the team. And I know Christine's not here, but we appreciate all the work they do in community development, the incredible work toward affordable housing this year that we as a council have made progress on. Just really novel stuff, stuff that it's, we're doing it first, and well, and it is well thought out, a lot of community stakeholders involved, and so I appreciate being a part of that. And last, and certainly not least, our finance team, another incredible budget, well-financed year, and good standing. Mr. Administrator, thank you so much. Madam Attorney, who's not here anymore, but Mark and legal team, thank you for all that you do. I am so proud to be a part of this council and on this team, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Mr. Administrator?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I had something, but I don't know if I want to follow that or not, so let me just say, prayers to the Pryor family, special prayer to Mr. Pryor with a house full of young'uns now, that it's going to be, we'll see what color your hair is.
Green.
Okay, I can relate to that. And to council and to staff, just want to wish everyone a healthy, a happy, and most importantly, a safe holiday season, and thanks for everything.
And thank you, Bill. Bill's been texting me, calling me every morning, so thank you, Bill. Appreciate it. So is the chairman and everybody else. Just thank everybody. We're one big family. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bell, you have anything from legal?
Just a prayer for Mr. Pryor and his family, and happy holidays to all council and to